Good morning and welcome, everyone, to the December joint meeting of the Power Authority as well as the Canal System. So appreciate everyone making and taking time. Apologize, we're a little quote-unquote "behind schedule," but be assured, we've been actively engaged not only this morning, but yesterday with ribbon cutting and launch of our new Smart Operations Center, eight floors below us, another exciting day and moment for the organization, and kudos again to Gil and the entire team for great work that's been done to open those doors, more importantly, the even better work that will come in the weeks, months, and years ahead. We've had a full morning this morning with governance audit and finance committee meetings, and we'll hear from the respective chairs a little bit later in our discussion. So with me today are five of our seven trustees, trustee Kress, Balboni, Traynor, and Nakandry. Unfortunately, trustees McKibben and Prasente are unable to join and have been otherwise excused. As always, the meeting's been duly noticed, and hence, I'm pleased to call it to order. Our first item, as always, is to adopt our agenda, which has been otherwise circulated and reviewed, and unless anyone has any proposed changes, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll move it.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Second, thanks, Ian and Mike. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We will, as customary, start the session, or the meeting, rather, in executive session.
I will move, Mr. Chairman, under Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law, go into executive session and discuss the financial and credit history.
Hold on, Sheila, we'll be ready. Great, do you have a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye. I appreciate it. We will adjourn to executive session, we'll be back with you shortly. Thank you. Thanks for the extended time in executive session, but be assured, we will move with due pace through the remainder of our agenda. That said, we now need to motion to resume our meeting in open session. Anne, thank you. You have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, and as always, reaffirm, you can be assured, no votes were taken during executive session. We've all received notification as to contractors and other approvals that are embedded in our consent agenda, among others, assuming there's no other changes.
I'll move the consent agenda?
Please.
I'll move it.
All right, you have a second. Questions, comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Gil, President's report from a strategic perspective.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and staff. I just want to put a cap on what we've been celebrating the past two days about our, the start of our journey to digitization, and so we have this vision of becoming an end-to-end digital utility, leveraging connectivity, big data, and analytics to drive actionable business insight that enables us to better serve our customers, employees, and other key stakeholders. That's what we're all about. And when we say end-to-end, it's really everything and every activity in NIPA, inside and out. To accomplish that, one thing new that we have not discussed in public is to effectively implement our digitization plan. I will be creating a digital transformation office, because most of our efforts are crosscutting amongst business units, all digitization initiatives, and there is a need for an effective and efficient project management of the efforts that we are doing, especially when we're doing an end-to-end digitization, and to advance our digital utility vision. So that's a recap of, from a strategic perspective. Yesterday, we showed you and showed the public the beginnings of our digitization process by unveiling our ISAC and two other digital hubs, the New York Energy Manager and Agile Advanced Grid Innovation Lab for Energy. Very exciting, very forward-looking, very cutting-edge, and I can tell you that we are all energized here at the Power Authority, and we look forward to, you know, showing everybody what we're all about when it comes to being a leader in the utility industry.
As I said yesterday, I know I speak for the entire board. Kudos to you and your team for the eighth floor and what's been accomplished, and more importantly, the vision and the potential to realize the opportunities ahead, so we all look forward to future outcomes and even more energy from you and your team.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Gil, appreciate that. Subagya, I think you're next up. He's been navigating and managing the risks, the ever-challenging risks that we deal with day in and day out.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and trustees, and my NIPA colleagues, Gil. I'll go pretty quickly. So last trustee meeting, we had promised you that we were working on Canal's risk assessment, and we have just completed that. But before I go to the list of risks, I just want to make sure I give you a context of this risk assessment. We have been working with the Canals team right through the pre- and post-integration phases very closely, and we've been talking to this, you know, engaging with the subject matter experts, both internal and external, and we have had our insurance partners, in underwriters and brokers, review the assets. We have done side visits ourselves, and we have also validated the findings with the current Canal's management team. So that's that. The list of risks should not be a surprise to anybody, so we have the talent risk, we have the safety risk, because the expanse of canals, and then catastrophic events, of course, again, the exposure is pretty high. Critical infrastructure failure, because we do have some of the critical assets that are vulnerable. Then we have the physical and cybersecurity risks. There, a lot of that would be, you know, in the current state, cybersecurity risk for canals, our estimate is low, however, there are too many unknowns, and as we digitize canals, as we integrate canals more and more, that risk could be higher. So, but, you know, this is the formal risk assessment, we have not been waiting until this formal risk assessment is done to do things, so we have refined the permitting process, we have ensured PCI compliance where there was a need for there, we have reimagined Canal's insurance program, we have changed quite a bit, and we are now having monthly risk meetings, and we are putting a dedicated risk management staff in there. So I'll go through this slide very quickly, all that this slide does is that as Canals is being reimagined, we will be, will continue to be engaged in the process and help out in this thing. So finally, my presentation is, you know, around some of the key projects and activities we have either done or we're in the process of doing. So on your table, you should have two documents that sort of, you know, finalize our reputation management, risk management toolkit, we have a flyer, we have a book, so that, you know, you'll see a lot of the information that Gil was sharing with terms of stakeholders, we have identified those, and what we need to do, how we need to manage our stakeholder expectation using the reputation risk format. So we actually are promoting the fact that reputation is an asset, not so much of a risk. If we can use it properly, we can get advantage of that. Business resiliency stress testing is another important effort that we're doing. Given our efforts to digitize NIPA, we need to understand the state of affairs today, the gaps potentially in terms of how resilient NIPA is, and also, as we go forward to digitize NIPA, how, what is the, what does the future look like, and what could be potential gaps? The idea is to make NIPA more resilient, so that NIPA can take actively more risks, appropriate risks. And business continuity plans, we are actually going to be completing, revamp of all business continuity plans by the end of this year, we are pretty well situated with that. And then, this is an example of insurance transformation that we're doing, we have already, in the last three years, we have brought down our insurance premium cost by close to $1 million, while not sacrificing our, you know, coverages. We are now doing programs like this, and Canal's Workers Come Program to save even more, this program will save about $3 to $9 million in the next five years. Canal's Workers Come Program, our expectation is going to save about $600,000 every year, actually, that's on the lower side, so. So that's my presentation. Any questions? Thank you very much.
We'll pick up some, you know, more of that next month, I think.
Sure.
Subagya, as we kick off the year, obviously, our new cyber committee of the board, critically important, the strategic initiatives, how we leverage risk management to further secure the foundation, as you said, and take full advantage and the like, so, but appreciate the quick drive-by.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Bob will pick up finance, and that coming out of Finance Committee, given the work that was done earlier this morning, so Joe Kessler, give us a drive-by on the world of operations.
Find those quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, trustees, Gil, and staff. Just real briefly, I'll give you a quick update on operations, then there's three resolutions that I have to cover with the trustees today. So all primarily in the green for our measures, obviously, our DART rate, we're not going to hit the target, very aggressive rate, we're very proud of where we are despite the red. Obviously, we have very little tolerance, and zero is our real target, so nothing really major in that area right now, so we're pretty happy with the success there. Well-established and well-publicized, our efforts in Puerto Rico. The only thing I would add to what you probably already know from your materials is that this week is a big week for us, is we're going to be transferring some staff in and out from the contingency in our own staff on the transmission inspection crews and repair crews as well, so a lot going on there, it'll be some logistics issues that you'll probably be seeing going forward this week.
How would you assess where, you know, Puerto Rico is, you know, give us?
So I would say that progress is being made, I think it's slow and steady, I think finally, it seems like in the last month or so, there's some rigor around the approach they're taking. The New York contingency's been playing a huge part in that, as far as building a structure of our cohorts with Conde and the other utilities. So right now, and what we're seeing is a good, solid recovery on their, with their backbone in transmission. The difficulty is, there's that, a lot of distribution work that has to be done, and they're just getting a good feel of some detailed assessments on that. So from a percentage-wise, they're always ranging, depending on how the day goes, between 40% and 60% on generation, based on their base load they expect today. But in terms of numbers of customers, it's really hard to figure out what that number is, because we do it by metered customers, of course, and they're not measuring it that way. Our sense is that number is significantly higher, or higher to some degree, because the last mile, for example, on a lot of these distribution things is not getting resolved right now, so we're working on that with the contingency.
Great, Mark.
We're still months away from...
Months away, months away, yeah.
So this is clearly a long-term...
Right.
...investment commitment on the part of all involved, ourselves included.
Right, and the group that we're sending this week is actually going to go out for about six weeks to eight weeks, then we'll reassess there what the complement should be, based on the new competencies, it might be more transmission-less, or I'm sorry, more distribution-less transmission at that point, that kind of thing, so we'll try to evolve the complement as we go forward. The big key, I think where we're hitting the most effect on there, as the New York Power Authority, is really in the assessments, we're still down there doing the detailed assessments, and some of the bills and material that they were blind on, I think early on, we're helping them flesh that out, so that's where the real work is happening.
Okay, as Anne said, we're incredibly proud of all the great work that you and your team have done and continue to do and will do, so.
Appreciate the support.
We'll come back and recognize that shortly, but...
Yeah.
Yep.
Appreciate the support. NERC SIP regulatory audit is underway right now, this is the big week for us, December 11th through the 15th, they're at Clark right now, my VP of Technical Compliance is out there supporting the audit. This is going to be a hard look, as you can see, we got about 2,400 cyber assets that they have to keep an eye on, so this is going to be a kind of a deep dive throughout some of the audits we've had in the past. We feel very well-prepared, we've been ahead of this right along, in fact, we had some recent self-reports that were minor in nature, so if those are the kinds of things we're looking at going forward, I think we're pretty comfortable where we are, but again, they're going to do a deep dive, so we got some things to learn there.
Is this an annual process, or...
No, it's not necessarily annual, it's, the reviews are always annual, but this is, this deep dive one is not annual, it's a...
Was our last one done?
I don't know that, Casey, I don't know if you would know that off the top of your head, but I don't, it's been years, I think, three years.
This one's on a six-year.
Six-year?
Okay.
And then just to inform the board that we've done what we normally do, prepare ourselves for the polar board season, things like that, and our fuel purchases, making sure...
We knew the winter was coming.
We knew winter was coming, and we prepared for it, so, wanted to make sure you knew that. So I'll move on to...
Did you know when you were pushing your snowblower in your driveway, or...
Actually, well, never mind, I have some issues with my snowblower right now, so, I have a broken stirrup pin, and my wife is home alone with it, so, it's not a good, I'm not a hero right now at home, so, so that's, we're ready for that, fuel purchases and all the inspections that are required for that. The resolutions that we have, the first one is the On Call Program PM, Project Management Services, that we have for a lot of the work that we have going on. So with the growing number of infrastructure modernization, strategic initiatives, and energy efficiency projects, the Authority has the need to retain on-call qualified program project management firms. The services to be rendered under these contracts include program and project management, environmental health and safety support for those projects, project controls, and construction management. And based on the responses to a request for proposal advertised in New York State Contract Reporter, 14 proposals were vetted and received. Based on the evaluation, staff recommendations, they recommend that we award three New York-based firm contracts that demonstrated they have the required experience, total presence, and will satisfy the MWBE requirements that we have through procurement. So today, we're requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize these three five-year contract awards in the aggregate, not to exceed the $25 million. Anne, I'll take any questions.
You'll come back to us, you'll keep us posted as those dollars are expended.
Yeah.
On a go-forward basis, so this just is an umbrella authorization, and you'll come back as you step into that.
Correct, if they, any authorizations that exceed the thresholds that are required to report to you, we'll make sure we bring back to you on those.
And this is otherwise included in current year budget and everything, right, Bob?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Have a motion to approve the requested action? Second? Dennis, thank you very much, any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. The second resolution that I have to cover with you is on our TLEM, it's a circuit breaker contract award. This is obviously a project that, programs you're very familiar with, there's been several releases on this already. This current one is on TLEM, and it consists of a reward that was vetted, again, through procurement of nine 765 KV circuit breakers to replace at Messina substation, two 230 KV circuit breakers, and 24 115 KV breakers at remote substations throughout Plattsburgh, Saranac, and Willis substations. So today, again, in continuation of the efforts of the TLEM, we are seeking, requesting the Board of Trustees to ratify this 10-year contract with ABB for high-voltage circuit breakers, the total amount of $14.2 million. Interapproval, the contract in the amount of about $950,000 was approved in September, so this is a continuation of that effort.
This, we'll step into this over, progressively over the 10 years, or is the initial outlay more significant, or what?
I think there's an initial outlay, and in terms of the overall purchase order, they're all going to probably be manufactured and shipped as one, one project, so over implementation and allocating them to the project will happen over the 10-year period.
Okay.
So move.
All right. Appreciate the competition.
I'm energized.
You want to get out? Karen will appropriately allocate all those seconds, I know, so. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. You're on a roll, Joe, keep going.
Doing best I can. The next one is another well-established life extension modernization you're familiar with on LPGP, that's the pump storage plant in our Niagara Power Project. At their June 29th, 2010 meeting, the trustees approved the capital expenditure authorization for LPGP LEM, estimated at overall about $460 million, to renew the generation assets at LPGP. At this time, the trustees also authorized capital expenditures in the amount of $131 million to proceed the major contract awards. Subsequently, there were other approvals in the amount of $253 million and $300 million, and the current authorizes amount of $300 million respectively. So finally, in November 2016, the trustees were advised that due to an extended stop order for the motor generation vendor, the overall LPGP LEM program schedule would be extended to 2020 to 2022. In February of 2017, the halfway point of the LPGP LEM program was achieved upon completion of the sixth overall unit of 12. Subsequently, the seventh unit was completed in October, and the outage for the eighth unit is currently underway and scheduled completion in May 2018. The overall program is scheduled to be completed at the end of 2022, as stated. So today, we're requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize the remaining $160 million in capital expenditures to complete the LPGP LEM program.
And again, how that $160 million will be expended over the next five years?
In this case, it'll be per the outages, so over the next five years, each outage is about, roughly, about half a year, roughly 40 weeks, I think now, we got them down to, so over that period of time, we'll do the remaining six. So we did the entire plant, all the ancillary services together, then we did each of the feeders together, folks have approved those over the years, and now we're doing the individual units within those feeders, we're halfway through that, this carries out the balance of that.
So the good news is everything is going as anticipated, no significant variances from the original approval back in 2010.
The only variance was the date change that we talked about from Dixon in 2020, which added no money, but that we had to go back and change the order.
The aggregate expense is very much within the originally anticipated plan from seven years ago.
Correct, correct.
All right, obviously, a key component of who we are and our ability to generate and transmit, so, other questions? Have a motion to approve?
I move it.
Judge, Dennis?
Second.
Second. All right, unless we have any questions, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I have for you, thank you very much, happy holidays.
Before you do step down, we've got a resolution where we want to recognize the great work that's already been done for the benefit of the residents of Puerto Rico.
So this is just a board resolution to recognize the effort of the team, your team, Saul, and everybody part of the New York delegation.
Great, thank you very much. We know there's much more to be done, but...
Exactly.
Know that you and the team are cheering for everybody, and incredibly appreciative, and as I said yesterday, we all realize it's much more than a recovery and restoration effort, this is a real humanitarian effort, and we're incredibly proud of your contributions to that, so.
Appreciate the support.
Very well done.
I would move it.
For the resolution itself, okay? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Jill.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees. And so as I report, every time we have a meeting, we're looking at the customer usage, which is pretty close to forecast, generation, which is slightly higher, as you've already reviewed, I'm sure, in detail with Bob, looking at the budget. Electric prices are down slightly, but also converging with the forecast, and largely due to fuel prices, and these numbers are as of October, based on when we put this together, but we're still continuing to see a similar trend for year-end. We also report on where we are with the customer business, so at the end of October, we were trending a little bit lower than we had projected for our overall revenue, but we are expecting to come in on target for the end of 2017. Additionally, we continue to trend slightly lower on expenses, which we will close out lower as we are seeing the year-end, so our overall numbers for the customer business will be just slightly better than budget. On this also, we also track how much we have closed in new contracts, because that's a great indicator of how the business is going to do in 2018, and we will be ahead of our target of $280 million in customer contracts, we'll be exceeding that just slightly in 2017, which is very good headwinds for us going into 2018. And I also am reporting on the IT and technology part of the business. Here, as you heard already yesterday, we had a big milestone with the Integrated Smart Operations Center, we're also moving forward on many of the other strategic initiatives, and we've also moved our help desk to a 24/7 model for the first time for NIPA, and that's really reflective of the continued, really reliance and dependence of the entire business organization on the technology department. And so I'm going to also present on one item that requires action for the trustees, before I turn it over to Keith, and that is the award of contracts for energy service performance contracting to a new set of nine partners, several of which who we've done business with in the past, but a few who are new to NIPA. This is exciting for us, this is very much part of our customer strategic initiative, which is serving customers in new ways, dealing with new products. We here have responded directly to customer demand for a new type of performance contracting structure, and so here, we're not asking for additional funds, because it's going to be using funds that the trustees have already authorized, but we're entering into long-term contracts, so that requires the trustees authorization. And going into 2018, you'll hear more about this as we use these contracts for our customers, and we put in a couple of example pictures here, because these are the types of customers who themselves have asked for us to use these types of contracts. So with that, I'll look for trustee approval of this recommendation.
Any questions for Jill on that?
Great.
I could then have a motion to approve. I know there was a motion among all that, there's bound to be a second, you sorted it out, Karen?
I got it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I think before you turn the podium over to Keith, given that this will be your last time at the podium on behalf of NIPA, take a couple minutes to reflect on your tenure and acknowledge the great times that you've had with us.
Thank you, yes, so as we've announced just today, this is my last meeting with the trustees, I'll be leaving NIPA in January, I'm joining Southern California Edison, a utility near Los Angeles, and I'll be joining their leadership team, working on many of the customer types of products and services that we've been doing here at NIPA. So I am eight years at NIPA, and I am very grateful to Gil, especially, to the board, to my fellow executive management committee members, and to all the team members who I've worked with through the years, who've really taken some risks on me, given me new assignments, new responsibilities, it's been an incredible time of growth. I leave NIPA here certainly bittersweet, it's become very much a home for me, but it's time, I think, for my family and I to start something new, so we are going to be relocating 3,000 miles away to California to warmer weather, and we are looking forward to that, but I very much appreciate and am grateful for the time that I've had here at NIPA.
Well, we'll offer some thoughts at the tail end of the meeting, but I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to...
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
Acknowledge your team and the organization, HR, so.
Thank you.
Great.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Joe. Keith, some more allocations of power and power awards. Continuing the good work of energizing the state.
Thank you.
Give us a drive-by.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, trustees, and all in attendance today. As recommended by the Economic Development Power Allocation Board on December 11, 2017, the trustees are requested to approve over 19 megawatts of recharged New York power to 29 customers throughout the state. These 38 allocations will collectively support the retention and creation of over 3,600 jobs and nearly $1.4 billion of capital investment commitments. The balance of available recharged New York power to award is approximately 158 megawatts, of which 50% or 79 megawatts is hydropower. One way to replenish the program is through compliance action, which was brought to you at a previous meeting. This item is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any questions.
We've all had an opportunity to look at the details in advance. You have some, you know, very meaningful allocations here, and indicative of the continued growth and development. Any thoughts, comments, questions for Keith? Otherwise, I'll be happy to take a motion to approve the requested action.
So move.
Dennis, thank you, second. Michael, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. This next item is in regards to the Western New York Economic Development Fund. On November 7, 2017, the Western New York Power proceeds... On November 7th, 2017, the Western New York Power Proceeds Allocation Board, or Proceeds Board, recommended that one business be awarded fund benefits totaling $150,000. The related project, which you received in your board books, is tied to the retention of 14 jobs, the creation of 50 jobs, and over $2.6 million in project investment. The trustees are asked to approve this recommendation, and to date, about $35 million in fund benefit awards have been approved, and there is currently approximately $6 million available, of which approximately $2.8 million is dedicated to energy-related projects. This item, again, is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
You mean, I lasted, but $6 million is still available?
$6 million available.
And that's a evergreen fund, it can be used to be replenished, right?
Correct, it can grow, yes, but $2.8 million of that has to be dedicated specifically to energy-related projects.
Understood, okay. Yet to be identified, but that's a carve-out.
Yes.
I'd move that.
All right.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks very much, Keith, appreciate it.
One more.
Yep.
Our last item requests the trustees to authorize the execution of long-term electricity supply agreements with nine New York City governmental customers through 2027. Specifically, agreements with the City of New York, the New York City Housing Authority, the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, the New York City governmental key customer group, which includes Battery Park City Authority, the Jacob Javits Center, Empire State Development Corporation, Hudson River Park Trust, Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation, and the United Nations Development Corporation. To provide some background, NIPA has served the New York City governmental customers for over 40 years, since 1976, and the current contracts, or contract, is expected to expire at the end of this month. In 2016, the New York City governmental customers accounted for approximately $1.1 billion in total revenue to the authority, of which about half was their electricity supply. Special consideration has been given to the impact of New York State's clean energy goals and the continuing changes in the authority's supply portfolio to serve this customer group. Some of the principal features of the new agreements are a 10-year term through, uh, December 31st, 2027, the establishment of individual agreements for each governmental customer, flexibility for customers to access renewable market products to meet their renewable energy goals, consistent, again, with the state energy plan, cost-effective budget certainty by locking down fixed costs at $105 million per year and fixing those costs for the first five years of the agreement. Uh, variable costs such as purchased power and ISO services will be a direct pass-through to these customers. Zero emission credits related to the New York State Clean Energy Standard will be collected under the terms of this agreement. Con Edison delivery charges will continue to be passed through at cost without markup. Lastly, if I may, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the team that I had the privilege to work with over the last year to negotiate these agreements. From economic development, Tabitha Robinson, Colleen McConnell, Eric Bowers, and Christine Schmidt; from finance, Scott Tettman, Agley Travis, and Jacob Kim; from legal, Javier Bukobo and David Applebaum; from risk, Earl Von Logi; and from energy resource management, Jenny Liu and Scott Brown. This item, again, is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Yeah, terrific, that's a great outcome.
Yes.
Obviously, a big team effort.
Absolutely.
Uh, kudos to all involved, uh...
I have a motion?
Second.
Second? Uh, any other questions? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Keith, as always, great work.
Thank you, and happy holidays, too.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, um, so we spent, uh, the bulk of the morning in, uh, committees, and, uh, at this point, uh, we'll have, uh, reports from, uh, the chairs of those committees. Uh, we start with, uh, Audit and, uh, Trustee Nakandry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the Audit Committee met this morning and adopted, uh, their minutes, received an internal audit activity report, and reviewed and approved the 2018 internal audit plan for NIPA and Canals, as well as the 2018 internal audit budget. The committee also considered amendments to the Audit Committee Charter and recommend its adoption to the full board at this meeting.
Um, fully engaged effort, and kudos again to, uh, Angela, Joe, Justin, and the team for, uh, navigating, uh, the audit plan very effectively, uh, through transition, and, uh, yeah, very pleased with the progress and the outcomes there, so...
I would move that.
Well done, one and all. I don't think we need a formal motion or approval there, but, uh, appreciate that. Uh, we started the day in, uh, Governance Committee, so, and some brief comments on the outcomes of that.
Uh, the committee met this morning, as you mentioned, and received reports from staff regarding procurement, real estate, and ethics. The committee considered some minor changes to the Governance Committee Charter and changes in committee appointments that were recommended by the chairman and reflect the addition of our two newest trustees. Um, I think very germane to many of the conversations we've had today, the committee also recommended the creation of a new committee on cyber and physical security for NIPA and the Canals.
And I think, uh, we need, as a full board, to approve, uh, the appointment of those committees and membership?
That, that was not in consent.
Yes.
Oh, it was not in consent, all right, so like I said, uh, we were already approved, all of that, so very efficient, well done, all one and all. And, uh, last, Judge Upinchet for trustee McKibben, and chaired, uh, a very in-depth, uh, Finance Committee. I'll defer to you and Bob Lurie to ham and egg a little bit to recap, uh, all of that and hit, uh, relevant highlights for the group at large.
I'll just do the bread.
You'll do that.
Committee met this morning and approved the minutes and minor amendments to the Finance Committee Charter. Committee also voted to recommend the adoption of three budget items to the full board, and I call on Bob to outline those briefly for, uh, uh, the entire board and publicly here.
Thank you. Obviously, we, I, I presented the, uh, the full plan in, in public session, so I'll just, uh, summarize that, uh, the financial plan that I, I presented, uh, began the acceleration of investments in the strategic plan that we presented to you in July. Uh, that plan includes the digitization strategy that Gil referred to in his CEO report, which we're, uh, very excited about and, uh, and anxious to really ramp up. Uh, the, the plan also, uh, meets the thresholds that allow us to protect, uh, our high bond rating, allows us to finance those investments at low, the lowest possible interest rates. Um, the plan also maintains the highest level of safety and reliability and sustainability of our assets and operations, and that's the case for both NIPA and Canals, and we believe is both financially prudent and also, uh, moves us, uh, continues to keep us in the leadership position, uh, in the energy transition in New York State. Uh, so, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Bob. Therefore, uh, Mr. Chairman, I ask the members, uh, of the board to adopt the resolutions found in the document regarding the 2018 NIPA budget and the four-year financial plan, the 2018 Canal budget, and the release of funds, I think $20 million, to the Canal Corporation for the next quarter.
Thank you.
And unless there's, uh, well, can I have a second for...
Second.
Have a second, so unless there's other questions, that we had great discussion earlier this morning, certainly in preparation for today, and, again, I say kudos to Bob and, uh, the team for, uh, again, a well-developed, uh, plan and, uh, even better execution, Gil and the entire organization this year. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Uh, motion carried, we're officially authorized, uh, for 2018, so well done, everyone. All right, uh, before we wrap up, uh, one last order of business, as we, uh, acknowledged earlier, this is Jill Anderson's, uh, last official, uh, uh, time with us, uh, here as a board, uh, certainly will continue for the next, uh, 30 days, plus or minus, but, uh, I want to give, uh, us as a board, and Gil in particular, the opportunity to, uh, share some thoughts and perspectives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are told by the Old Testament, and coincidentally, by the rock group, the Byrds, a number of millennia later, that for everything, there is a season, and a time to every purpose under the heaven. That language provides us with a poetic justification for Jill Anderson's decision to leave us next month. As many of us have learned over the last few days, Jill has accepted a leadership position with Southern California Edison. She will be leaving us early next month, and she will be missed. As the proclamation of the board, which we will give you a little bit later, um, and the letter from our governor, Governor Andrew Cuomo, beautifully attest, Jill's accomplishments throughout her eight years have been truly extraordinary. She is extensively lauded for her work as the co-author of the New York Energy Highway Blueprint, her many achievements in energy efficiency, Build Smart New York, Five Cities, Charge New York, and her favorite, smart LED lighting. And in such disparate areas, such as regulatory affairs, small renewables like K-Solar and large-scale renewables, and commercial operations, corporate communications, and energy policy. Now a little personal history, I first met Jill in 2005 at City Hall in New York City, and it was obvious who she would eventually become. She was already known as a brilliant young engineer at Con Edison and a rising star. She was in the midst of what was called 3G, Third Generation Project of Con Ed. She was benchmarking smart grid projects all over large cities around the world to help evolve the grid of Con Edison into its third generation. Is anyone here surprised? I recognized that this was someone that I wanted on my team. I tried to bring her into the Bloomberg administration in 2005, but it just didn't work out. But I was dogged and determined. Eventually, Jill came to NIPA in 2009, and when I became president and CEO, I asked her, although she will tell you that she asked me, to be my chief of staff, and it turned out to be a great partnership. We listened to each other, understood each other, and supported each other, both equally dedicated to whatever we were trying to achieve. Recognizing her considerable skills and her unbelievably impressive learning curve, it made enormous sense to give her more assignment and greater responsibilities. And each time I did, she exceeded all my expectations and extended her growing legacy of achievement. Eventually, she became my co-pilot. Given all that she had accomplished both internally and externally, Jill started to serve on a number of prestigious boards, and the rest of the industry started to understand what she had to offer, as she made her views known on a wide range of transformative energy issues. And one area where Jill was definitely ahead of the curve was her insistence that many more women be recruited by and elevated in the utility industry, a world that had traditionally been way too male. Always a person of action, she created women in power so that we would be a far more inclusive and diverse organization, one that better reflected the actual demographics of our customers and our state. Again, to no surprise of no one, it became an incredibly popular group as it embraced all kinds of training while learning from a variety of speakers and thought leaders about what it takes to become effective leaders, male or female. In many ways, Jill is following a great tradition at NIPA. She has made her mark, established an amazing legacy, and then move on to new challenges. For decades, we have attracted such larger-than-life individuals to the power authority. They come here because they have an enormous opportunity to make a difference, whether it is building hydroelectric plants in record time or creating the transmission backbone for our state. Eventually, they leave. Then, we are blessed with new great leaders, and they begin writing a new chapter for NIPA. As our turbines keep generating electricity, the lights stay on, and life continues. Well, we know that is exactly what will happen after Jill leaves early next month. But for now, we will take a moment to be a bit sad as we say goodbye to our wonderful colleague Jill Anderson. She will definitely be missed by all of us, especially by me.
So this is the, uh, the board resolution?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, really.
And a, a letter from, uh, our governor, Governor Andrew Cuomo.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anything to add? Chairman?
Chairman, can you get in?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, really, I'm, I'm overwhelmed, it's, it's incredible. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for everything you've done for us, and we look forward to watching the continued rise of your power and the years ahead, albeit, uh, on the left vote. All right? Our best wishes for our continued success, okay? Thanks for everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
With that, our, uh, agenda has been completed. I won't even ask you to sit. Uh, if, uh, there's no other matters to come before the board, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carried. As I've said a few times, our next meeting will be, uh, excuse me, the tail end of January, I don't know the exact date, Karen? The 30th? Okay, very close to the tail end of January, back here in, uh, White Plains. Have a wonderful holiday season, uh, one and all, whether yours start tonight or later this month, uh, enjoy. Thanks again, everyone, for all you do for the benefit of, uh, the authority and those we serve. Again, happy, happy holidays and a happy new year, and as they say, uh, we'll see you in 19, so 18, sorry. All right, thanks very much. Meeting adjourned.